Good morning. Good morning. That's us, Private Joe. Good evening. This is the City of Pleasantville, City Council Working Evening. Day's date is July 18th, 2022, time is 6:30 PM. This meeting has been newly opened by the City's News Bureau for the public meeting, otherwise known as Sunshine Mall, Brooklyn.
Swan, Dad and Cory.
Present.
Damar.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Kamona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sisra.
Present.
Six of it.
I have taken a motion to approve the previous minutes.
Motion.
Second.
All right.
A.
Last but first, except is that I can't remember who we're trying to board.
Yes, that's correct. Good evening. Is this on news or phone? Is it on? All right, cool. All right, so we had issued a status report dated July 14th. The items on page one are all under maintenance bond. Starting on page two, one of the projects we're working on and we receive county funding for is the boxing ring, a professional boxing ring, to be installed at the recreation center. We're working on those specifications. We'll just listen for quotes for that to get that work done. As it relates to our DOT projects, Ansley Boulevard has been awarded, that was a DOT from, I believe, 2018. We had requested extensions of funding because we have some sanitary sewer replacement that is required, and my office is in the process of scheduling a preconstruction meeting for that project. We then have listed the Transit Village, which was a streetscape on Main Street. That's on maintenance bond. Decatur Avenue, that's also a project where we're in the process of recommending, awarded that contract and scheduling the preconstruction meeting. Again, that was a DOT-funded project from 2019. We had sought an extension so that we could get funding to replace the sanitary sewer, which was also necessary in that roadway. The city did award, under the municipal aid, 2020, there's improvements to Tunis Avenue, Harrison Avenue, the Cross Road and Avenue. That contractor was awarded to Lexicon Concrete, and we do anticipate the contractor to mobilize in the week of July 25th. The city was awarded in 2021, and then we phased it in 2022, improvements for Dowdy Room and Park Avenue. And again, because sanitary sewer replacement is required, we're looking to get I-Bank funding or infrastructure trust funding for that project. So that project has not yet advanced pending that. The city was awarded a streetscape, Transit Village, for streetscape improvements along the Black Horse Pipe. Due to the cost of that project, what we did was we had attempted to phase it. So we've recently applied for phase two of that work, and we're going to be seeking an extension from the DOT to award that contract pending that decision.
Excuse me, can you say again what street is that?
Two of it. That was Streetscape on Black Horse Pipe.
Black Horse Pipe.
And then we were awarded a Transit Village grant in 2022. That's for streetscape improvements along Old Turnpike, specifically from Main Street to Franklin Boulevard. That project is designed, is in design. We anticipate submitting that to the DOT shortly for their concurrence to bid that project. And that is basically everything that hasn't changed, but is on maintenance bond. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
How, what is in Harrison? When is the work in the story?
They'll be immobilizing in the week of July 25th.
Thank you.
Can I get your? What does "mobilize" mean? That's when they'll actually be on site and start the actual work. It'll start there with, we have a sanitary sewer component on one of the roadways. Typically, then it's concrete work, and then you'll go into the actual roadway work, which is a resurfacing of those roadways. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Do we have any objection as it raises the time frame for the boxing ring?
I think we're waiting on the seal, and then just hold the Pleasantville seal so that we can get that into the design, and then we just need to get different quotes. We do think that'll be under the bid threshold at this point, so then we would just get it out to contractors for quotes.
How about that? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first on the agenda for agenda review, this work is number 11, second reading to the National Government Meeting, establishing and adopting a complete and complete streets policy.
Any questions?
Resolution number 12, first reading, authorizing the completion of various roads and related improvements in the city, appropriate in sum of $1,750,000, and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds or bond anticipation notes, and the average principal amount of up to $1,662,500, making certain determinations and covenant, and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the forebode.
Any questions?
I have a question. Mr. Moody, I think I read in here that the interest rate was not set for this. Do you have like a?
No, what we do with any kind of money, our bond attorney will solicit bids from up to 100 million or more, banks and financial agencies, and we will take the bids in, and we will analyze the best numbers. We don't have the set number yet.
So whoever gives us the best interest rate?
Exactly. We did one for store about six weeks ago, and it came in 2.68, which was a great number. We're hoping for kind of same area.
Thank you.
And what this is for, it's mostly for Dally Brook, I'm sorry, Decatur Avenue, not big one, Decatur Avenue. I think we awarded, as Laura said, at Ansley Boulevard a couple weeks ago, that completed just over capital money. The bid came in for Decatur Avenue from Route 9 to Franklin Boulevard, over $3 million, which was nearly $1 million of estimated costs. We have money from the grant, 412,000. We have money from the store, construction, close to a million. The balance is what we're looking to do to the 1.7 million total cost. We have put 5% of that down. We have put $87,000 down. So we're really looking to borrow 1.66. That won't be able to complete and will be able to award the job once the second reading gets done. We can't award the job until we actually have the fund, certified funding.
Derek, I'm sorry, which street could you send?
This is Decatur Avenue.
Decatur.
I think most of you, if you run down Decatur Avenue, especially by the way the school was created for.
Oh, yeah. And if I could add, this is one of the NJDOT grants that we were in jeopardy of losing. We did not, they've constructed few stone, so we decided to bond for a somewhat used the NJDOT funding.
I was direct, that was a question, I was directing the board back at you here. The bids, it didn't go off a bid?
Oh, yeah, we went up, we had, we went in six people to go out the bid for the project. Then the bid range from 3.046 to 3.62.
Costs have escalated since the date of the board, so it's over the amount that we thought we'd be able to afford that.
What committee did this go to, Derek? Finance committees that this went through?
I think it went up to?
Finance. On this, a line portion like this, I typically take it from finance, and I know with you on sewer, we now want to start taking the projects from sewer, other committees as well, which we plan to do. However, prior to this, because this was on our original capital, we had already had it, so it's not a new street.
And it's been paid, said we could have lost over $400,000 in additional funding for the DOT money.
Any more questions?
Resolution 139, authorizing to submit an application entered to a grant review with the Department of Community Affairs, American Rescue Plan Firefighter Grant Program.
Questions?
Yes, please, one, explain, please.
Yeah, so this is basically American Rescue Plan Firefighter Grant money that they have set up specifically for public safety, for COVID-related items or equipment. So you're talking about PPE, sanitizer, oxygen, anything, helmets, and we do have fire represented here, so I don't know if you guys want to add something to that, but this is what this grant is for.
Thank you, Ms. Peyton.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman, part of this, the Governor Murphy set down was, like what Ms. Peyton said, was for PPE. That also includes turnip gear, cleaning, you know, like washers, dryers, or specific dryers that, you know, clean, that drive the turnip gear quicker so they can be used in service. Boots, you know, anything that we deem that keeps us safe with our PPE from COVID and other carcinogens, or anything else that can be given to us. We spoke to the grant, the grant writer, and we're upfront to apply for $100,000. It's set for 75, but the city has been designated where we may be able to get the additional funding. Okay.
Yes, sir. I know one time when you talked, you guys were saying that you need an exhaust and make sure that when you start the trucks, that the exhaust is taken.
Now, that is, the construction started today.
It started today?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the last question, that's coming, by being able to clean that equipment, being actually being able to use it again and again, as opposed to, did you have to toss it before? Toss some equipment before?
What we had was, when it was COVID, when it first came about, we didn't know anything about. So we purchased sanitizer, basically detergent, that the hospitals were using, that the thyme, it would take the process, it would put a firefighter out of service about an hour to two hours while it cleaned. One of the dryers will take that one to two hours, put it back in service in about 15, 20 to 30 minutes. It's a little bit better, and it's not aesthetic. Doesn't deteriorate the material like a tumble dryer. This is all, it's out like this, and it blows air in, and it dries that way. More natural.
Great. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 140, for Japhin Amal Bellin as the local coordinator for the Urban Enterprise Zone Program from the New Jersey Department of Energy.
Can you just explain why we have, why we're going back to Ms. Peyton, to what the UZ work?
Certainly. Certainly, so we're grateful for the Murphy administration, who has re- implemented the return of funds to UZ designated communities, which Pleasantville is part of. In order to properly manage that funding, we have separate funding sources where it comes in under UZ. In the past, we had a UZ coordinator, that was a full-time position, who actually managed the program. Because the program has been revamped, or the state has taken over a lot of the duties, certifying the ID, certifying the local businesses, and things of that nature, we still need someone in place to help manage any economic development projects in the city that was relative to UZ. Japhin Amal Bellin has worked on the UZ program since the beginning, and felt that she was the qualified candidate to be the coordinator representing the city as we move forward.
Thanks, any questions?
Ms. Peyton, is this appointment, is it a one-year, or is it as long as we have the UZ zone, as long as we have UZ and that person is still here?
Any more questions?
Resolution 141, rescinding resolution number 89-2022, authorizing assignment of municipal lien certificates to Telepharo Construction Services Incorporated.
Any questions?
Yes. How come this is being rescinded? Derek, you can explain another one.
Back in the middle of May, we, after resolution, sell, couple taxes into telepharo construction. He was given until June 1st, came in to pay for it. He said he never got the email until he was away, till we gave him to the 15th. Come the 14th, yes, an extension to June 30th. Period of 18th, we still haven't seen any money. So we're looking to reset it.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Resolution 142, authorizing a tax collector to refund taxes on certain properties in the city.
Any more questions?
Resolution 143, authorizing tax collector to cancel taxes on certain properties in the city.
Any questions?
Resolution 144, authorizing assignment of municipal lien certificate to Miles Edge Capital LLC.
Any questions?
Resolution 145, grant approved for the Pleasantville AARP Shredding Community Event on July 30th, out at the City Hall parking lot, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon.
Any questions?
Mr. Congressman, just to the public, this is a community event that is being held for free, so you can bring out any items, paper items that need to be shredded. It's being hosted by the AARP partnership with the City of Pleasantville on a city parking lot from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon on July 30th, so please spread the word.
Any more questions?
Resolution 146, determining the form and other details of this note relating to the construction financing program of the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, to be issuing the principal amount of up to $3,200,000, and providing for the issuance and sale of such note, and authorizing execution and delivery of such note by the city in favor of the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, all pursuant to the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank construction financing program.
Can you explain it?
Well, I don't know if I can have, I can't say that many words at one time. But this is additional infrastructure that we need for our store lines, obviously. This is for the I-Bank, estate, they run agency. When we do get around to doing the borrowing, which is approved by everybody, rates are usually between 2 and 2.5%. And the nice part about this is that many times, part of the principal was forgiven as it comes due, and that's depending on what kind of rate of return they get from their own investments. A lot of that money, you need to filter down through the Murphy administration, and we're looking at, they're really pushing for water and wastewater infrastructure repairs throughout, throughout the state. We have, as I mentioned earlier, we need to borrow some money for the first three jobs for store. There are more, probably five or six to seven more roads that need to be worked on through the infrastructure. We're hoping with the grants that Laura mentioned earlier, Park Avenue and some of the other areas, that in conjunction with the I-Bank money, we'll be able to do all the roads and take care of all the store infrastructure as much as we can.
Is this a grant or loan?
This is a low-interest loan, with part of it possibly being forgiven, and mostly, we have one right now with the I-Bank where every quarter or once a year, we get a bill. Part of the interest is forgiven, part, I'm sorry, part of the principal is forgiven. So it is a loan, and it's, I believe it's a 20-year loan.
20-year loan?
But this again, right, why, the reason why you're looking at this is because the city again was in jeopardy of losing NJDOT, so we have to leverage that so that we would not have to send those monies back because the concession tariff was not successful.
And usually, rather than borrow directly for the infrastructure, the I-Bank will lend us the money at a lower rate, and only on draw-offs rather than one big one, sorry, which is beneficial to the city.
So, question. So with this loan, where our taxes go up?
No, it's a store utility.
Why?
You can get rid of that, same question, Derek.
Yeah, why? You said store utility, why?
This is, this is store, and this is store borrowing.
So why does?
Our taxes would not go up. That's the question.
The fact is, or the fact is, the store rates?
Yeah, we, I think we've got to be, we've had nine years or 10 years without a store rate increase. I've worked on some numbers, and I, my feeling is if we have a 4% increase in December, we'll be able to carry the debt service for both, the 2.5 million we did before, and this 3 million, which starts in '23.
Derek? I'm going to go back to 2% of the, this is 41, if there's not even more questions on this, so this one, 41. What was the terms and conditions of that agreement?
The terms and conditions is he was supposed to pay within 30 days.
That's noted, duly noted in 30 days, if not, you can fuck that off.
We extended that as much as we could, because, one, obviously, we'd like to have the payment, have it on the tax books, but he was just unable to, he came to us probably three or four times, and said, I'll be there 10 days, I'll be there in two weeks. He never showed up.
So basically, this is just like us sending the grant money back, or the?
That's pretty much it.
Any more questions?
My next is for you of the bills.
Any exercises, Derek?
Like, on the bills that have been paid since last time, this time is really just the payroll for last Friday, of 556,000. The bills to be paid, I'm looking for approvals. If you go to page one, down the bottom is the monthly ACOA trash pickup and recycling fees. On the top of page two, this is future system, you know that we do this with abandoned properties and a lot of things that involve code enforcement. They can send me bills quarterly basis, so this is April, May, and June for this $6,200. Two below that, three below that is DW sales. There is a pump motor at Wind Bay and along Windsor Avenue.
That's a pump station.
Windsor Avenue.
Sewer, right?
Store, yeah. Go to page three. You go to page three, half, two-thirds, halfway down, is Game Time Inc. You'll see for 8626, 8926, these are replace park benches in, especially in recreation, in recreation buildings and some other areas. We had a inspection come down by Green Acres, where they felt that our equipment was no longer in reliable condition, and we had to replace it.
That's second recast?
That's recast.
What about the rest of the parts? What about the, the, the?
There was a, there was an inspection, first of all, they're unannounced inspections, right, so we're quite ready. However, there was spot visits to all of our remaining properties, and all of the non-compliance items were noted, and we were hopeful that we can correct most of those items through the CVG funding that we had in place, maybe for 2021, for playgrounds, parks and playgrounds. So some of the park benches, the boxing rings being done through that, and some other items, the tennis court, the basketball courts, there was some practicing at basketball that we're working on. So to our benefit, it was really time for it to get done, and it was fortunate enough that we got CVG defunding to help support getting all these things corrected. So is that various parks and any make inspection at all of our ratings? There was some signage that has to be updated, all of that has been taken care of. So we're working to completion. I've sent the document to the state telling them what our status is, and that the I-G will be updated shortly.
How many parts, along with the backside, how many parts?
Tell me.
Got to be like 60 cents.
67.
And in addition to, we're also in the process of getting rubberized mulch, which is a minimum requirement by the state, and we're replacing, used to be wooden timbers as borders, they're being replaced by rubberized wood timbers. So that's something you'll see probably next six weeks, as they get delivered and we get, we have to pay and bill.
Yeah, that's what, my question was, that grant, usually that grant applying to parks and recreation, as opposed to using that for a street, covering about 10 feet of the street, you know? You know, that was one of my complaints before, and we just got a lot of upkeep, and we don't do it annually, that's a little.
Yes, question. Is this, is this grant annually, or is it every other year?
So is, is your community development law grant money that comes in, it's administered through the county to the municipalities, and your projects have to meet whatever those criteria is are? The past practice of the city, as Councilman Sisraum has stated, was we would usually take that to help offset the road improvements. Every now and then we'll be able to, because it's not just for parks and playgrounds, it's for other uses and uses, which we have been using it for. When did it come on, Councilman?
18?
The year that it came on, we realized some of that money toward a book have no part, and so our 2021 monies, our boxing ring, as we realize it's non-compliant, cannot have any professional boxing events there, and, you know, boxing is big in the City of Pleasantville, so we were able to use this money for that, and then we can potentially bring activities and some small portion of revenue into the city once that's upgraded. So it's an annual amount that's allotted to the city, it's typically not a lot of money, it's around $150,000. And again, we've used it for roads, we've used it for parks and playgrounds, it's a decision of council.
Got you. Yep. Bring that decision, we'll come back to the finance committee, or, no, we have a special meeting, we can talk about it.
Just keep in mind you're 2022 or 23. I'll let you know, has already been allocated, so I'll let you know when we start.
Continuing on page three, a couple down, there was, you'll see GSCRM Inc. We had to rent some materials, so expect the railroad crossing, to see what kind of shape that was in. I don't know if we have a report yet, but I think it was paid.
Which street?
We do. So that was the bridge overpass that I sent you guys, so that was the equipment that we had to rent. We had to rent that to get up one of the breaks to do the inspection, and the inspection report has come back, basically saying that based on the damages, exterior damage, not interior, so the likelihood of the bridge collapsing is, the risk is very, very low, but we are getting estimates to see what cost to repair the bridge, and hopefully we can tie that into the infrastructure money that's coming down the pipe.
If we jump over to page four, three-quarters of the way down, if you plug the Board of Education, that's $814,000, that's our payment to the school for the month of July, that is increased based on their budgetary increases. And if you go to page, page five, at the very bottom, we're refunding $25,000, I believe, for marriage certificate. The Governor had said that we're nowhere in charge for marriage certificates.
Oh, I thought they had changed it.
Just physical, yeah. Just physical, 22 to 23.
So it would be a change in mind, I thought you just put your physical.
I think we collected money as he was saying it, so we had to refund it to him. They told my wife that she charged more for divorce than for, for marriage certificate. That's all. Any questions on Annabelle?
Yes, question.
Yes.
I guess we could start at page five. Wendy Heinz. Last time this person was on the agenda, I actually thought that it was going to come back meaning to committee or something like that, or, but I know, Leonard, you did send me the policy, and the policy doesn't states the dependent, but we keep paying for dependent?
Yeah, because we're under the state health benefits, the state health benefits covers dependents up until age 26, so the city's required to cover dependents up until 26. Although it's not written, it's implied, I've been through this conversation with legal, if you want to continue to have that conversation, we certainly can, but that wasn't the directive that I got at the last time that we discussed it, but that is the estimation.
But from unlegal, saying that we still should pay?
Yeah.
Okay, so can we discuss this? Because I think that if we're going to do it for this person, because we should continue on doing it for everyone. You are. Well, I think that even though they're deceased? Well, I think that even though they're deceased, they're employed.
Well, I don't know if we do it for deceased employees.
But you do pay for dependents.
Yeah, I know we do, if they're alive, but not if they're deceased.
So that's, I think that's the great area that we can discuss here, that we've talked to labor and reference to and again, I think we just probably not formally discuss it, we can take it to committee, but based on the recommendation that was given to us, labor is trying to see it here, is that, it doesn't state in our policy that we don't, right? So we can take it to court, see where it lands, but I think we're open for a risk and I don't know, Rick, I know you don't have much information on this, but I don't know if you could jump in and help, but we do plan, the contracts are up or CPAs are up at twenty-three and we are planning to ensure that it's very defined and clear and uniform, but right now it's not clear.
Yeah, I'm just asking if you can discuss this a little bit.
And let me just, just as you're thinking about what that discussion is going to be, these are contractual issues, so you can't arbitrarily go in and make these changes without reading your contract. And there's a lot around this that I just need you all to take into consideration, not saying that you can't do it, or just telling you what we'll be dealing with as you face that.
It's a discussion that's happened, but you need to have it offline, discussing contractual issues, it would be.
Can I, can I just, okay. All right, I just want to clear it up because this is not for the spouse, this is for the dependent, am I correct? All right, good. That's what you were trying to say, am I correct?
This is for the dependent spouse.
Oh, the dependent spouse. Because I heard you say you're on there until you're twenty-six years old, so I'm thinking it was a child.
It is, spouse and child.
Oh, spouse and child, okay.
I'm sorry. Could you go over the, what you said about the school district, the payment to the school district?
Eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, that is the monthly payment that we make, because we collect the taxes for them and that we, based on their fiscal budget, July, June to, July one to June thirtieth, their budget's increased and we pay the increase also. The amount that, the amount to be raised by your taxation has increased. It was like fifteen thousand dollars, seven ninety-eight from July last year to June this year, it's eight fourteen now from July to next year, so it's gone up fifteen thousand dollars. And that will be reflected in once we get the final number for tax.
Because, I mean, usually they're at about eight percent of their taxes.
That'll be included in the tax rate once it's officially struck. What we have right now is an estimated tax bill, we had to do that bill to get some money and to pay bills because normally the tax rate is struck until when the governor does his budget and then all Atlantic County people have approved their budget and the county have approved their budget. So it's a combination thing before we can actually get a certified tax rate. So we had, in order to have money to pay payroll and everything else, we didn't estimate the tax rate for the first time in a number of years. And once the tax rate is struck, adjustments will be made in the fourth quarter of the tax book. Hopefully it'll go down, but we don't know, because I think the county, looks like the county taxes may be coming down. The school, I think, I'm gonna go on a little bit.
The school taxes will go up for the city of Pleasantville? Because they're a hundred and twenty million dollars, it just doesn't cut it anymore.
I just wanted to ask a question because I know the last time I had spoken up about the situation that's going on within the school system and the money that's being paid to the charter school out there, that's under investigation. We still haven't heard anything back from them. Has anybody contacted them to see what's going on? Because, you know, we're sending our tax dollars to a school that, I guess, one of the board people are under fraud, am I right? They've been charged with fraud. So, you know, our tax dollars are still going out there, so I think we need to look into that, I asked last time, I didn't get any response from it. So I'm just hoping that this time, if we have to set up a meeting with the school system to find out, are they taking any type of action to find out what's going on out there? Because if we're sending our money to someone who's committing fraud, that just doesn't seem like a smart thing to do.
I know that, I know, I don't know anything about the results of that outcome, but I know there's things going on with it. As Joy mentioned, their budget's a hundred and twenty million dollars, a hundred and eleven, a hundred and eleven million coming from the state. So if you look at, the state's sending ninety-nine percent of their budget being funded by the state.
And ten million is going out to that school, so if they're sending that much money out there, I think that money should be going to our children, so that's only as much as I'm saying.
I have one other question. Yes, page four. What is it, NCRL LLC, what is that?
Their phone, their phone service that we have, we have, we're serving that for our phones. All the office phones come through NCRL, rather than Verizon, the numbers, we did this probably three years ago and NCRL was a little cheaper and service was a hundred percent better when we had a problem and also when there's a problem, they fix it prior to the hour. Verizon took in our telephone.
And then down here, Law Offices of Thomas Smith?
He is our conflict attorney.
Yes.
There are a number of conflicts with our attorney, Cooper Levinson.
Are these new conflicts from last month or they're pending items that you guys have previously approved? Pay to wear all of the conflicts that's caused. Okay, so these aren't new?
No. Can you just fill this, where are your legalists?
Page three, Brunel Associates, I know they are our grant writer, but what's pro services? Pro services?
Pro services.
Professional services. That's the category. And do you know what grant they were working on?
Probably ten of them that work on it, including one that Captain Trifog was talking about.
And the first page, how often do we replenish the easy cash, like every month? I just feel like it was the one last.
Yeah, we probably do it every six weeks. What has happened now that they have reduced our minimum, before the minimum was a thousand dollar balance, I just got an email yesterday, the minimum's down to six fifty, so hopefully it won't be seen as much.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Any more questions?
This one, is Brunel Associates the only grant writers that we have?
No.
Okay, guys.
I need to put a portion on agenda item.
That's a public portion on agenda item, you can put a four state to name, three minute rule for our time.
Good evening, Priscilla Noel, good evening, everyone. I remember two, or do you need number twelve? What does that pertain to specifically? Is it another bond being issued or is it from a previous discussion of the bond?
This first reading, I'll see if we'll explain it better. Could you explain what's number two, twelve, are you referring to twelve?
Number two, or it's number twelve?
Number twelve, okay. This is, we need to borrow money in order to fix the road on Decatur Avenue from Route nine down to Franklin Boulevard. The bid came in for repair, there were three million dollars. We have money in the store, we have money in grant and that's what we need, the balance to complete it.
Wait, I don't understand, you said money in the sewer.
We have, because the three million dollar bid was store infrastructure money, store repair, which we have that, we have that part of two point five million dollars we borrowed six weeks ago.
Right.
We have grant money of four hundred thousand that will come from DOT. The balance for other roadwork in there of the three million dollars is what we need to fix the, fix the road all completely. If we don't do the road, if it's not approved first and second reading, we will have to give back over four hundred thousand dollars to Department of Transportation and the road won't get fixed.
So is this in conjunction with that four million that was discussed when we were in the Red Center that time or this is a new issue?
This is a new issue.
And number ten, resolution one forty-six, what does that pertain to?
Everything to additional roads throughout, throughout the city, including Park Avenue, Bridgewood, pump stations to replace and upgrade our pump stations and there's a couple of other roads there, well, they're not to help them right in front of you, but that's, again, that's for store repair and it's financed through the state New Jersey Infrastructure Bank.
But it's a bond?
Yeah, the bond that they issued and we co-signed for part of it.
So that, that's a bond, I have ten and I have two as a bond?
The bond, this is for what we call our current fund and the other is a bond in the store utility.
But it's still, it's Pleasantville debt? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Last question, I don't know the lady who just spoke on this issue, I don't think I heard her name, is she still here? What's your name, hi?
Priscilla Noel.
Priscilla Noel, okay, because I have, my name is Mary Ann Martin, I live three twenty-six West Park Avenue and Mrs. Peyton and Mayor Ward are familiar with my problem and it deals with having Park Avenue paved. I started asking Mayor Tweedle in probably oh-five and I brought pictures of how the street potholes and various things at that time. Well, in twenty-twenty-two, it's worse and I heard the gentleman talk about Decatur Avenue over by the school. Well, if you drive down Park Avenue from New Road going to Broad Street and you get to the cemetery and in that area, it's almost as bad, I won't say it's that as bad and I know you live on Park Avenue. So I hope that what has happened, I mean, you know, I've been patient, I pay my taxes faithfully. I was a little behind on my story. But I painted up, okay?
This is why I have the news for you though.
Oh, good, thank you, because Mrs. Peyton, I know you've helped me with my problem and I appreciate it, but it's getting worse because of the speeding now and it is a maze because they're gonna be on this side and they're gonna avoid that hole and park cars and so we consequently have to pray, you know, as the cars are speeding and that's another thing.
This part, I won't let you talk, I'll let Councilman Davenport, he's gonna continue now, he is the chair.
Oh, good, we will talk.
Yes, ma'am.
We will talk. And one other thing that has been happening, our cars, if you are, you know, not diligent and you don't lock your car, we have been having a few break-ins with the parked cars overnight and the police, they come out to talk about, because the first, well, it's another long story, but, you know, the police presence for the speeding and maybe at night, you know, these little, I don't know whether kids or whoever, but I'm beginning to feel not safe and I love Pleasantville, I've lived on forty years.
Ms. Martin, do you live like towards Broad Street?
I'm right behind the Sunoco Station.
Got you, okay.
I'm right behind the Sunoco Station, okay? And my lawn is done by Brother Dean Gunther from Twin Oaks. Brother Dean, yes, you know, I'm proud of that and hopefully that we can talk about this.
The engineer was just here and she was, your project is on there that she was talking about and the deadline to be awarded this project is November twenty-twenty-two, so it's coming up soon.
Anyone else with a question? See anyone? Say emotion, close your mouth session.
Second?
All the favor? I'd have it, next is.
Open discussion?
Open discussion for council. Council, what time is?
Nothing at this time.
Council, what time is?
Nothing, thank you.
Council, for real?
Steve, I do have something to say. You know, I don't know when we're gonna do this, but I got a letter, anonymous letter from someone, I don't know who it was, but it's in reference to fire department and some of the other issues that are going on in the city. And I just want to make sure that we've all read it and that we sit down and have a conversation about what's going on because some things are kind of disturbing, some of the stuff that I've gone through and this correlates right in with that and I think that it needs to be addressed before it continues to go and get worse as we go. So I'm hoping that maybe we can put it on the agenda for Thursdays and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Is that possible?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I think we can discuss this somehow, depending on what it is, whether we have to do it in exact session, I'll let the attorney and all this on that. However, just keep in mind, yeah, I think our Public Safety Committee meeting right before the special council meeting, your fire department's coming out to do a presentation, so some of, I don't know, I'm not receiving half the letter that you referred to, but, you know, we've been working with them monthly, having monthly meetings with them, I feel we had an open, great dialogue and been making some progress, so we have them scheduled to appear before Pump Safety on Thursday, so maybe some of those things, I don't know what they are.
Well, I'll see, yes, I'll make sure you see them.
And if not, then we'll just carry on to the proposal, but I think we all need to kind of be familiar with whatever that is so that we can understand what's going on.
Council, um, Carmela, if possible, can you let us know what was the outcome or what the topics are in that meeting that you all want to have on Thursday? Thank you.
Anything else, fair, if you have anything?
I just wanted to remind everyone that August second, from five to eight P M., we're gonna have our national night out over at Langston and Totten Road and everyone come out to support that. And on August ninth, we're having our community meeting at the library, community ward meeting one and two, from five-thirty to, try and keep it to an hour, but it starts at five-thirty and that's a chance for the residents to come out and voice your concern and just hear if there's any hot topics going on in Pleasantville that we think you need to know about. And last year and the year before that, we attempted to do the farmer's market and this year crops thought it would be better, they got a, they are having a mobile market. So anyone that wants to and support that, they're gonna go from different parts of town, you're making me, I mean, it's fine, they're going to different parts of town, July twenty-seventh to August tenth, from Wednesday from four to seven P M., they're gonna be at Forty-Nine South Main, that's in front of Milan and Main. And Pleasantville North is gonna be from August seventeenth to thirty-first, that's gonna be Wednesday from four to seven, located thirteen-eleven North Main and they're having a community garden. And Pleasantville South is gonna be from September seventh to twenty-eighth from four to seven, inside Bay Harbor Apartment Complex located at ten oh-six South Main Street. So we'll be announcing these and we're gonna put it on the website and everything, but I'm just asking everyone to come out and support the things that we're trying to do. And one more thing, on August tenth, Wednesday, August tenth, at the yacht basin from five-thirty to eight, we're gonna have music, bring your lawn chairs, we're gonna have food truck and ice cream truck, just come out and enjoy yourselves, five-thirty to eight, Wednesday, August tenth. Thank you.
Question, Mayor, can we get a flyer on?
Question, mayor, can we get a flyer on the events for crops? And is there a flyer?
It should be one in your, I think there may be one in your mail.
Not, it came in today, no.
Oh, okay.
And August tenth, is there a flyer for that?
There's one in me.
Okay.
I'll make sure you get, and you have national night out?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make ten, the other ten.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I'm gonna take a motion to close the section.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
As having. This is City of Pleasantville, City Council regular meeting. Today's date is July the twenty-two, timed at seven-twenty P.M. This meeting has been duly advertised and citizens will speak for their performance with the open look meeting act otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Would you please stand for invocation and reflection. John Bennett, I'll be by name, King Kong, by word of honor, as a visitor. He gives us a stay and he gives us a message. So we forgive those who have questioned us. We is not a temptation of the devil's rule, leave, by his meaning, our, the Lord. Pleasure be this, to the fight of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, endless law, with liberty and justice for all.
Swan. Davenport.
Present.
Fennel Aaron.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Kamona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sistrum.
Present.
Sis trump.
I'm gonna take a motion to suspend the meeting with reading minutes.
Motion. I'm sorry.
Dismissed with the reading of this.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
As having. Mary Ann, your nomination, proclamation, presentation.
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Okay, first is ordinance number eleven, second reading, public hearing required. It's establishing and adopting a complete and green street policy.
Motion.
Second.
Open. Oh, yes, I meant to start this as a public hearing, not a public hearing.
Okay, if this is public hearing, ordinance number eleven, if anyone has anything to say or comments, questions or concerns, please come forward with your name. Scene number one, I need a motion to close the hearing.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I need a motion for roll call. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number twelve, first reading, is authorizing the completion of various roads and related improvements in the city, appropriate the sum of one million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds or bond anticipation notes in the aggregate principal amount of up to one million six hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars, making certain determinations and covenant and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the foregone. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution has been, I mean, sorry, ordinance has been moved to second reading scheduled for August the first. Resolution one thirty-nine, authorizing to submit an application and enter into a grant agreement with the Department of Community Affairs, Americans Rescue Plan Firefighter Grant Program. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one forty, important, Jack won the model belting as the local coordinator for the urban enterprise zone program from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one forty-one, rescind the resolution number eighty-nine dash twenty-twenty-two, authorizing assignment of municipal lease certificates to Telefarro Construction Services Incorporated.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution, resolution one forty-two, authorizing the tax collector to refund taxes on certain properties in the city. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one forty-three, authorizing tax collector to cancel taxes on certain properties in the city.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one forty-four, authorizing assignment of municipal lease certificate to Miles Edge Capital LLC.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one forty-five, grant approval for the Pleasantville AARP Stray Community Event for July the thirtieth, City Home Apartment, March of ten A.M. to noon. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one forty-six, determining the form and other details of this note relating to the construction financing program of the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank to be issuing the principal amount of up to three million two hundred thousand dollars and providing for the issuance and sale of such note and authorize the execution and delivery of such note by the city and favoring the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank all pursuant to the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank Construction Financing Program.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one forty-seven, is an add-on, authorizing assignment of municipal lease certificate to ESQ Capital Three LLC.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion to approve the bills.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Aaron.
Yes.
Thomas. Yes, on everything, but Ms. Hines, was that what page?
Four.
Four. So noted. Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum. Motion approved. Next is public portion.
Next is public portion, anyone pushing to speak for today?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council, Your Honor, the mayor, administrator, my name is Nestor Smith. I wanted to give some context to the statements that Councilman Davenport provided us with moments ago. It was in April that the article was published about the gentleman who was on the school board who was cited for taking in excess of a hundred thousand dollars of Pleasantville tax off of money. To my understanding and largely confirmed by the absence of comments, you guys haven't done anything since. As a result of that, you sent an additional two point five million dollars to that school. And that individual who is facing charges has pocketed an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The conversation, respectfully, is not with this board. At this particular point in time, the conversation is with the Commissioner of Education. The conversation is with the prosecutor who has the case. The conversation is with the Department of Justice who has an open file. The conversation is with the ACLU for the discriminatory practices that that charter school has. I'd encourage you guys to do something, or you can choose to do nothing. But if you choose to do nothing, understand the message that it is that you're sending. The message that you're sending, should you choose to do nothing, is that it is perfectly okay to come into Pleasantville and abuse your children. That's the message that it is that you're sending. I know some of you well enough to know that that's not what your intent is. But your actions speak louder than that unspoken attack. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else want to vote?
Priscilla Noel.
Mr., Mr., just a minute.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, can you come back again? What's your suggestion?
What is my suggestion? Respectfully, my suggestion is that we go into executive session, have a conversation about it. You're gonna have to excuse your present council and order to proceed with that.
Good, I think you're right.
Excuse your present council and order to do that. The reason why I say that is that that charter school is represented by Cooper Leifert.
Motion to go into executive session.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to go into executive session. Can I, yes, that's what I, that's what I'm doing. At the end of, we took the motion forward, but at the end of the public portion, we'll go into executive session. Up. Next.
Good evening, Priscilla Noel. I'm just trying to figure out what the plan for infrastructure is moving forward as far as the sewer. Again, I will continue to ask until I get an answer. Are we, as the City of Pleasantville, what are we legally bound from the concessionaire agreement to do as the City of Pleasantville?
Well, when you use the term legally bound, I think that's a question for our legal counsel. And I think to answer the, the first part of your question as it relates to what's the city's plans, I think we can update you as we conveniently discuss before what those plans would be. We would be able to properly update you and others that are concerned about what the plans would be. And we actually have a meeting scheduled this week.
Yes, we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, am I right, Mrs. Peyton?
No, Thursday.
Thursday. Thursday. So we're gonna have our soon committee meeting and go over what the plan is because it hasn't been a plan put in place since the concession deal. And that's what is a little upsetting to me that when you take action of that magnitude, you should have a plan in place and there's nothing in place to rectify what's going on. Or do we know whether or not we're gonna be legally bound to it because our attorneys hasn't said anything to us? So.
Uh, attorney, does the attorney, this, he works for the law firm that represents the City of Pleasantville? And when you say attorney-client privilege, does that include the residents? Because we are, in a sense, clients in the city. When does executive session become public, when, you know, you say attorney-client privilege?
Several questions, guys. Generally speaking, any matters that are related to attorney-client advice or potential or actual litigation or contractual matters are discussed outside of the public view because they're treated as things which need to be addressed in closed session. Things that happen in a closed session, it comes under the public through basically two different ways. Counsel in an open session will take some action from which you can imply what it was that was discussed in the closed session. Or at some point in time, the matter that was the subject of closed session has been resolved to the point where it's no longer necessary for that to remain confidential, then the minutes from the executive session can be released with public consumption.
There's no definitive timeframe.
Depends on the matter that's under review and what happens with it.
Okay. Of all the council people on here, who was counsel in twenty-seventeen? Anyone who served as counsel as twenty seventeen? How about twenty eighteen? I'm sorry, mayor?
I was on council also in twenty seventeen.
Yes.
Okay, cause I just had a question as far as salaries go. As far as the business administrator, from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, there was almost a thirty thousand pay rate increase from one hundred and, one hundred seventeen, nine hundred forty-four thousand in twenty seventeen to one hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars in twenty eighteen. I would like to know what warranted that such a large increase, being as though the residents of Pleasantville median income is forty thousand dollars?
Mr. President, going back and as was presented to us at that particular time, the average for a man and average for a woman, and she was under that scale at that particular time. Being a woman, she was under that scale and brought her up to an equal opportunity scale, a scale that
But is that for a municipality of this size that generates that same revenue with the same demographic? Was that looked into?
Yes.
At the same time, there was a police chief, a police, a fire chief that were making much, much more than the business administrator, which is the top official in the city. And the government, there was a law, there was legislation that brought it up that park, you know, they said it had to come up the park.
The statue?
Yes, and they had to bring it up the park. And that's when the raise came about.
Does anyone know the statue that says it has to be?
Well, I, I mean, I don't have it with me, but that, at that time, it was well-publicized. And when the motion was made and we all, we all agreed to it, yes.
I was in a year during that time, but what I know of management is, if the business administrator is the top of the, you know, organizational chart, everybody that falls underneath typically makes less money than the person at the top. So if the people that are, you know, management, lower management are making more than the business administrator or whoever, has to be brought up to at least that, if not more.
I mean, because when you go to different municipalities, there are different pay scales within reason based on the revenue of that municipality, so that's why I.
It's never based on revenue.
No.
It's never based on revenue.
I'm just saying, like, a town that's bringing in only five million dollars as opposed to a town. Pleasantville earns less than Atlanta City.
I understand that, right.
So that's where I'm saying, where are these numbers, where do these numbers come from to?
Just took, because first of all, she was underpaid as a female on this chart. She wasn't comparable to a male in the same position.
So you're saying males in Pleasantville in the past were paid more than her? And then when she got the job.
I told her I wasn't here, but when I'm going on track.
And as I said, the police chief and the police, the fire chief.
The reason why I brought this up is because the business administrator had made a comment of looking out for the pockets of our people. And I don't know if that, at that moment, I understand what you're saying, is looking out for the people. There have been no pay freezes, there have been nothing to relieve the pressure, the financial burden of the average median, which is forty thousand dollars. That means three and a half times more this person is making, but they're looking out. I don't know if there is any connection, if you're making, somebody, the average resident is making forty thousand and this person is making this, and do you feel that in Pleasantville?
Yes, she does.
Okay, but it's still.
Equal work, equal pay, Priscilla.
I'm just saying, sometimes you're out of touch when you don't look out for the infrastructure of the sewer. And that's what it goes back to. You're a little out of touch if things are being kicked down, the cansy are kicked down the road. So as long as my pockets are paid, I'm good and whatever else happens to the city is on the residents.
I believe it's done by collective bargaining too, right?
No, it's not done by.
No, no.
I mean, that's why the.
Same as the superintendent, no, it's not.
And we don't have a superintendent.
It's just a matter of.
I'm saying comparatively positioned, just the way.
Anyone else from the public?
She always has someone to say.
Anyone, anyone else from the public?
Good evening, my name is Adam Prince.
Good evening.
Um, there, you were talking about the different meetings in August, the ninth and tenth, is it anywhere, like, you have it where it's written down, or you can get it, like, a flyer or something?
Yes, we're going to do, we'll do a flyer before the ninth.
Okay, and where can we get the flyer?
Uh, there'll be some at City Hall, but I'll take your number.
Oh, my phone number?
Yes.
Okay.
But we're going to put it on, online. Yeah, yeah, I don't want to do it.
Okay, all right.
We'll do a marquee as well.
Yeah, I just want to, because I know people who aren't computer savvy, and I'm sure they would like to know what's, what's going on, so I just would like to get, like, a flyer of the date.
Okay.
And then I can just, you know, talk to different people to see if they want to come out.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll put it on a marquee, and also on ninety-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else from the public? Scene number one. Let's have a motion to go to public portion.
Motion. All in favor? President, I have a question. Madam Clerk, I would like to change my vote on the bill list, because I shouldn't have voted on it, so I'd like to abstain from that. Could you correct that for me, please?
You referring to the same thing for Miss Thomas?
The bill list, yes. No, 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 the whole bill list, yes.
The whole bill list?
Yes, abstain, yes.
Okay, all right, so noted.
That to vote for the public portion calls.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Second. Okay. Now, we have, I was from Mary Haven Johnson.
Yes, happy new year. Today I had the pleasure of meeting, to meet me every month, again, I had the pleasure of meeting our Vice President Kamala Harris today. She's just as, she's friendlier in person than she appears on TV, and she's little. She wasn't much taller than me, I always pictured her to be a tall woman, but it was good, the NAACP conference is really good, and I didn't have much time to spend over there, but I also got to see our solicitor, Yolanda Melville, she's doing a lot of good things with the youth within NAACP, and she spoke today, it was a good day. So anyone who gets a chance to go over to the convention, please go. I saw Councilwoman Thomas over there. Okay, that's it, have a good evening, everyone, and please do try and make the events, what business administrator and I were just saying, is that we're going to try and put all of the events on one flyer, and then that way everybody will have access to it.
That would be nice, thank you.
Johnson, with that report.
The only thing I have to say is that we're having an event, starts Friday, Saturday we'll be at the old High School Field, Caribbean Day, so if anyone that wants to come out, please come out, should be food, music, and, you know, some fun out there, so try to make it out every night.
Johnson, with...
I just want to thank everybody for coming out today. All right, just want to let everybody know, the Colombian festival was pretty good yesterday, it was real hot out there, so I got going, that was something I wanted, but it was pretty good, you know, I was out there till about three o'clock, well, I'm pretty good. So, I want to let anybody know, thank you for coming out, have a blessed night, and stay safe.
Councilman, Councilman.
I just want everybody to be safe out there, and be careful of young kids, because they're still out of school, and riding on bicycles, and when there's a crosswalk, you got to give the right away to the person waiting in the crosswalk, so everybody remember that's going to be a problem.
Johnson, with...
Ms. Faiton and the mayor already made the announcement, but I'm just, a friendly reminder about National Night Out Tuesday, August the second, from five to eight, and the shredding event, hosted by AARP, will be July the thirtieth, from ten to twelve, in a parking lot right here at City Hall.
Mr. Smith. Councilor, you have a...
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, yes, I'm, I'm sorry. It says registration is required, so please register today, if you do not need, it says you do not need to be an AARP member to participate, but registration is required, according to that flyer. So if anyone wants the flyer, or want to take a picture of the flyer, you know, you can afterwards.
How you register, online?
Well, they do have a code here, you can take a picture of it, a key word code, I'll show it to you afterwards, because I'm sure we all have things that need to be shredded.
Councilwoman Thomas, they said there, a lot of people were having trouble with, uh, yes, but, once you get there, all you have to do is give your name, and, I think they said name and phone number, they just want to keep track of how many people are shredding, not for any other purpose, but just to keep track of how many people they're having.
They would definitely say, because what the workers are from. Thank you.
That's right, have...
Oh, I do, I do. Ms. Martin, thank you for your patience.
Yes.
We really, really appreciate that, but I just want to mention, as we move forward to doing your project, it is going to be broken, because I don't want any surprises, it is a two-phase project, because of the length of work that needs to be done, so I think the first phase is brought to the tracks, and then tracks to, what is that, growing, all right?
I just was reminded, Councilwoman Fennel, she, she basically was talking about the trucks that are generally kids driving, riding bikes, literally, almost about five or six days, only five or six days ago, almost, they were, uh, watching the first worst accident I would have ever, had to watch in my entire life. There's a little boy riding a mini bike on Leeds Avenue, I had to call the chief at the time, but he was riding a mini bike, and he had another little boy in the back, but when he went around, he went around a dump truck, so he would go on the right side of the dump truck, and in front of, going on, going on to Main Street, and I just knew I had witnessed two deaths, because there's no way possible for the person in the dump truck to see. I called the chief at that particular time, I don't know who that individual is, hopefully they watched it, well, they basically, their mother, their father's watched, they were kids, they were on a mini bike, and that would have been a tragedy, just the way they cut in front of the dump truck, because the dump truck was at the stop sign. Yep, and, I just called out to parents, I called out to adults, I called out to neighbors, to, to, to put some, to put some action to it, to say, hey, look, I see you, and you have that, and we're going to have to take that from you, you know, because, you know, from other circum, other circumstances, it's hard to deal with those that are riding these bikes. On a better note, on a personal note, on a personal note, I just got back from a vacation, my first vacation in person, this is my first myself, on a personal note, I just got back from a vacation with my family, my family, and it was very, very extremely touching, just to get back together to see my family, and I hadn't seen in about three years, for us to break away from one another, to enjoy one another, and things of that nature, and I was just happy about it, you know, on this individual, this Pleasantville, that's trying, started to park here, but I got a big fat, a hundred and fifty to turn out, and that was pretty small, so, I hope you all get a chance to experience the same, have, have a great night, but made another motion, and that motion was to go into the executive session.
Who, who first that motion? Who made the motion?
Thank you.
Did I come first?
It's Kamona.
Kamona, who seconded, Davenport?
I did.
Okay. So, we're going after, yeah. You come high anymore.
I have a question.
It's just...